All right, the college meeting of the Board of Education to order, it's a work session. Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Second? Any change of it? All those in favor? Seven zero. Before we move on to discussion items, I just want to note today was a groundbreaking for the new Lebanon School. There's prescriptions for members packages, I believe there's some outside as well, materials. It was a great program. Jill, I'm just going to leave this with you in case you need to visit the site and if you need to do a little yard work outside, but don't dig in the soil in any of the schools. Thank you very much. Yeah, we don't get to do this often, so it was actually a great experience. All the students who were out there, thank you to all the administrators, parents, board members that came. I want to thank the architect, Tyseu Kin Design Studios, who designed a beautiful building that I can't wait to see take shape. I want to thank our entire government here in Greenwich for their support, the selectmen, the EET, the RTM, our delegation to Hartford that secured the funding, and everybody that persevered through this entire process. It was a long road, but what one is well worth it, so I can't wait to see the kids' faces once we get in the building. Thank you for that. So on to discussion items, the first of the business is the 2018-2019 tuition fees. So Donna, if you want to come and join us at the table, and Dr. Gilde, and if there's anything you want to start with.
The information that we share for discussion is the FY19 tuition fees rate. We have three categories of tuition that we charge here. The first is a K through 12 rate, which is listed here as Schedule A, and then we have a preschool program rate, Schedule B, and then Schedule C, which is our summer programs rates, which vary based on the course being offered. So just to highlight, and then there's a couple pages that follow that provides some history. The K through 12 rate that we're proposing will be based on the approved budget amounts, or at least that's the recommendation. So currently, the rate that you're seeing for 19 is based on a 2.19% increase, so that's $18,0216 for the 19th school year. For the preschool programs, we're recommending a 3% increase, and that is based on what we've done some research based on what other schools are doing, and that's the average of the increases that we're seeing for 19 so far. And then for the summer programs, also based on market information, we're seeing rates, we're recommending a increase of 5% on those courses. Through all of them. I'm happy to take any questions, and I'm sure Dr. Canna-Villa and Ms. Ford will also help answer some of those questions as well.
All right, questions? Mr.?
Just real quick, the board may be able to answer your question. How do you call what the 15% for the certified staff and the 25% for the other John boys?
I'm going to turn to my colleague and see if anyone else knows. I know I questioned whether it was contractual increase. I didn't see it in the board policies. I went through that, I didn't see it there. Not a contractual increase. I assume it's something that we've -- does anybody else know?
Well, I know it's not a contractual increase.
Okay, so it's something that we --
And that'd be pretty historic for a number of years.
Any questions? Ms. Stacey?
Page two, the long chart of some of the courses at the secondary level. I'm sure there's good reason, but I don't know the reason. For the math and English core courses, they seem to be much more expensive than all the other courses on page two. Is that because of the number of hours, the number of days is longer, or what is the pricing differential there? They're all in the 400s for English and math, the four courses, as opposed to, let's say, we compare it to robotics, or we compare it to the college workshop, or a focus on writing, those are less expensive. Can you tell me the rationale for that?
Oh, sorry, I --
Yes, I can. The rationale is that for the robotics and the courses that are less expensive, those are only for one or two days. The other courses are for the switch sessions.
Maybe I can ask you a question. How did we arrive at the offerings?
They're the courses that the guidance counselors tell us that the students are requesting to take over the summer for both making up credit, improving their grade, or trying to enrich what they're doing so they can take additional courses during the summer.
So as we bring up graduation requirements later, that they'll -- and credit recovery, we'll need to be having some more communication with the high school in terms of the offerings that they will want to do even coming this summer, looking at different options.
We do check with the guidance counselors starting in April as to what courses we would need to add for credit recovery, because in April they have an idea, so we keep that in the back of our minds so we can make sure that we are able to offer those courses.
Other questions? Mr. Shepherd?
I wanted to go back to the tuition cost, and I know I don't want to bring it up now to change it, but I think as we develop the budget for next year that we should benchmark ourselves against surrounding towns and also see how much of an influence the tuition rate is in attracting teachers to the district, you know? We say that, but we don't have any data on that, and also trying to benchmark ourselves against other school districts.
I know originally on our agenda, we're supposed to be talking about summer school, I guess at this meeting or this month. I guess this is a question for you, Jill. Given that we outlined a series of principles that we're going to target kids with summer school that were, you know, not performing at a specific level, this seems a little odd to me, because what we've done is we essentially have a program that's targeted kids who are invited, quote, "at a low performance, no cost," but then you get to high school, and that doesn't happen. So that seems to me to be a policy-principle disconnect. And I'm wondering when and how that's going to get addressed, because you asked us to put fees for next year, which is essentially a policy that's not in line with the principles that we've talked about.
We have to keep doing, we have to give you the comparison of what was last year before you'd be able to set any kind of rates, but I remember the conversation, I remember watching the video where you talked about this particular, you know, issue. So it is a -- you labeled it as a policy decision, so the board is going to have to determine what your tolerance is for that pricing differential, but, you know, I don't understand why if you're giving a reduced rate for free to reduce all the K5, why would you wouldn't extend that, you know, that pricing for those students, but it doesn't really make sense.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering.
But it's an expense, right? So part of it is you've got Lori and all of us who are new, who are, you know, we're trying to maneuver, being new. If we didn't give you the numbers, you know, what would you be comparing against? So we're trying to compare against what is currently. That doesn't mean we're not redesigning what can be.
So is your suggestion do this for next year and then implement? Wow, that just seems slow.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's going to take a team, you know, redesign all of this.
Well, I guess I'm on a different point. This is kind of like just a basic principle disconnect. It doesn't require a redesign, because the course is the same, the rest of it's the same, but it's really just a straight financial question, isn't it?
Right, so it's the financial piece, so that's the part Lori's handling, it's the permanent piece that we have to tackle, so.
Maybe if I could think of a suggestion, is it possible we could come up with a number for what it would cost to offer those courses to the students that need this for recovery or to improve academics? Can we come up with an estimate maybe by the public meeting?
That's a good question.
Can I just clarify that, Ms. Stacey? So you're saying that the class fee, even if you're not free to reduce lunch, would be reduced if you're underperforming?
What I'm saying is, is that we have this goofy policy, it's a total incongruous. K through five, we identify a series of students, hundreds of them, who are at a particular level of proficiency, meaning they're not meeting standards. We tell them, hey, come to, come to school for free, and then all of a sudden you get to the high school, and we set up a bunch of classes that are targeted at the same kid, but we say, oh, by the way, when you come, you have to pay 150 bucks, or 800 bucks. And it's like, yeah, well, and what I'm saying is, it just, it's got a big logic failure in it.
So the suggestion was that they try to figure out what would it cost us to extend a policy to the high school for these courses?
Yes.
And I may well be minority here, but I think last year I had also mentioned, sort of philosophically, I think we've come to understand that things like robotics is often something that both pulls kids into math or into learning other things, and while, you know, you can think of it as an elective, it is a primary way to learn foundational skills, and it's not clearly why we don't have a free-to-reduce rate for the free-to-reduce lunch students in that case as well.
So from a policy implication decision, what would be your policy related to free-to-reduce lunch access to summer courses? Summer courses?
I don't have a policy on that.
But you said the decision because you're looking at maybe earning money, that's right?
Yeah, I think I don't think it's, I'm pretty certain it's not in policy, because what we're doing is, it's one of these things like, you know, and fees, it's not instantiated in policy, but at least I never found it.
Are there questions?
I'd like to follow up on Ms. O'Neill's question. I didn't have the question arriving at the meeting, but since you asked, and we do have a personnel report as well on our agenda, I was wondering if you or Bob Stacy could tell us, do we have exit survey data on teachers' use of our tuition? Do we have some kind of way to survey our staff? Is that already happening so that we have anecdotal evidence that the discounted rate, let's say may not attract, but it does retain our teachers?
So Ms. Sutton's in the room, is she able to help us with that?
She has good data.
Worked you out?
Yeah, I think if that's data that you would like, I could easily get it. We've asked in the past, but never directly. If you want that, I already wrote it down, I could get it this year, I could get it next year, whatever you like.
Maybe you can coordinate with Mr. Stacy.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? All right, with that, we will move on to our action items. The 2018-2019 yearly meeting calendar.
Great, so this is something that we have looked at, and I believe this draft reflects the most current thinking. If there are other changes though, this can certainly be made. So the idea is we reflected, we got some public comment and feedback that board recognition should start at 6:30 instead of 6:00. We adjusted that. We got feedback that the board retriever workshops should probably be held in the evenings, and we wanted it at 6:00. Oftentimes, we are not going to meet four hours, maybe two hours, but we thought we would just do that, make those shifts per the last discussion. And then I believe that we reflected moving some of those PPs around. I believe some of that is shifted as well. We kept the one in December though, thinking that might wind up being a financial one. That's it.
And you know, the cover page still says board recognition begins at 6:00, but the actual, right, the calendar on the second page reflects 6:30, so the cover page should be helping. Ms. Stacey?
I'd just like to make a positive comment, that I'm so pleased with the change proposed to the kind of content we're covering in the board meetings, the ability to get deep into the issues that really drive student achievement, and to not have repetitive discussions, but to have consequential strategic decisions.
Another discussion? All right, I'm going to make a motion. Ms. Stacey, second? I wasn't prepared to accept any calendar. Sorry, actually, it's an action item, because it was carried over from our public meeting. So all those in favor of accepting the calendar? Seven zero. Thank you. All right, moving on, number one on our agenda discussion items, the first is G004, graduation requirements, missing out.
The first thing is that it's not G004 anymore, but it's 6146. This is the first of the new policies under our CAE thing, and the policy that we have before us is really a collaborative effort of the PGC committee of Mr. Bernstein and Dr. Pranistam and Dr. Gilde and Dr. Winters and Dr. Pietowski, all from the very beginning, have worked on this for several months now, and we believe it reflects the best of CAE and it also makes sure that we are making our students are, we're holding our students to a high standard in addition to being in compliance now with all the state statutes. So if anybody has any questions, so.
Any discussion? Is there a red line of this document?
No, unfortunately, it's, well, not so unfortunate, it's just it's a new process now, so what we've done, since there's really no crosswalk between our policy and that, this is a new CAE policy, so we use their template to go forward, but most of it represents new legislation.
Ms. Stacey?
Absolutely not for this year, not to be decided, not to be discussed. When we do get a chance to work with Wright Tech, I'd love something on dual diplomas, the recognition by Greenwich High School and a technical high school that the student has achieved mastery across a range of disciplines, but certainly not to be incorporated in this round of our visions. I just want to put it in people's minds for the future as we continue to press.
Well, you've been very persistent, and I totally agree, and I think it's something that we really should push to make some steps forward. We mention it every year, but we don't do anything about it, so this year, let's make it a resolution that we do something to move in that direction.
And then, you know, if you want to make a motion at the next meeting, directing the superintendent to explore that, that may be a way to move this forward. Other discussion? Mr. Shepherd?
So Ms. O'Neill, I thought maybe we might explain a little bit further how this is supposed to work, because it's quite different than what we have now. It says here, the headmaster shall, through the superintendent, submit to the Board of Education his or her detailed requirements. As I read this policy properly, this essentially transfers from the board to the superintendent the decision on what the standards are. That's the way this actually reads, so then, but that says it shall submit. I guess, is that a notification, or is that something that's supposed to be voted on? What is that? How's this supposed to work?
Let me see if I understand the question. So basically, the policy states what the requirements are, the number of credits, talks about bi-literacy, multiple pathways, but the actual standards, the regulations, come from the administration to Jill and then to the board for approval every year.
Okay, because I didn't, that's not what this says though, but that's what I was just trying to understand.
So what page do you on?
I'm on page one.
We're back.
Yeah, it's the last paragraph. It said, the house shall submit to the board. It didn't, as I read it, and that's why I was trying to be clear, it essentially says, you know, there's some, there's a set, the board has a set of standards, state requirements, content areas, and then this vision of the graduate thing is kind of new, which is on page two, it's the second section, communicating graduation requirements. So, and that's okay, and then it says essentially, I forget exactly where it says, it says essentially, the superintendent shall be deciding what are, what is acceptable graduation requirements. It says that somewhere, I forget exactly where it says it, which is, okay. So, but then, I guess, it said submit, but it didn't say approve, so I presumed it said the board is no longer involved in that part, so how's that supposed to, how's this supposed to work? I'm just trying to understand mechanically.
I believe that the paragraph you're asking about, and I believe that...
Is there another one I should be reading?
Yeah, it's reading. Right.
Go ahead, Jill.
Yeah, we don't prove it.
All right, let's try to not have the side conversations, so Dr. Gilde.
All right, so the paragraph you're asking about is in the beginning, and I believe that paragraph simply references the formality of the superintendent affirms that the students have met the requirements, the board affirms that the student has met the requirements, that's the part of the formality of certifying that the children are ready for graduation, but when you look at how the policy works, you're actually doing annual review. That's described right in the policy, and if you look at the detailed information in here.
Where was, where you, Jill?
There's actually a paragraph, I don't know if it's in the policy language or the regulation language, but it does have that you will be updating every year. It says it somewhere. You've looked at this a million times. It does say that.
The board specifically, specifically mentioned that at the meeting.
So we can hear somewhere.
We do have that here. So what it does do though, is it further outlines the timing of the communications for parents, which I think was a need that was identified, and what I'm excited about with this draft is that it gets you to the mastery-based proficiency.
Yeah, that part didn't, that part was great.
And it does have all of the requirements that all of you.
I guess I'm asking the policy elements committing on the policy part, which is the only part the board deals with, is, I just...
So, I guess because you're self-aware with it, we might be reading something that's not clear there, so is there, how would you reword that?
I don't know that I would. I guess what I'm trying to say is, if the intent, see, I read this as the intent is the board doesn't do that anymore, the board doesn't review the standards anymore.
That is accurate.
Okay, so that's not the intent, but I think you need to, summary needs to be revised so that it says, you know, whatever those standards are, they're presented to the board, they're approved by the board, because right now it just, it leaves, it's just information.
It's right, it's in the third paragraph. Graduation from our public school implies that students have satisfactorily completed the prescribed courses of study for the several grade levels, two, they have satisfactorily passed any examinations and demonstrate district's performance standards, in part by the statewide mastery exams established by the faculty and approved by the board, and that they have fulfilled the legally mandated number of distribution of credits.
Yeah, so the performance, the performance standards now is that they then are transferred to the superintendent and headmaster to determine annually what they are.
But what Jill is saying, I believe, is in the third paragraph, they have to approve last names.
Right, and even in that final paragraph, it says that headmaster through the superintendent submits to the board the detailed requirements and standards, which holds our schools as adopted by the board, so all of that is still your review process.
I think, I think, Barb, my feedback would be, I think you need to add a line here somewhere, that if they're submitting the standards and they're expecting, I think somewhere it needs to say the board should take action to approve those standards, wherever that fits in here, if that's the intent, I think it should probably render that explicit.
You don't think where it says, demonstrated by the district's performance standards, assessed in part by the statewide mastery examinations established by the faculty and approved by the Board of Education? Established by the faculty and approved by the Board of Education, it says after the mastery examinations.
The graduation for our public school implies that they're successfully passed any examinations or satisfactorily demonstrate the district's performance standards.
Assessed in part by the statewide.
You can leave that part out, because it's a qualifier. Standards established by the faculty and approved by the Board of Education. District's performance standards, okay, so that goes back to my question, which is, how is that?
It's annual approval as part of the regulation. That was what we had discussed throughout the entire committee, and it never wavered and it never changed, it was a annual approval. So you are going to see this every year.
Well, the, I think the idea though, Peter, is the reason we continue to change this annually, we were changing the policy annually. I think the idea is that the performance standards come as a separate recommendation, not something that we're going to redo the policy, but they will come to us for approval.
That sounds reasonable.
Okay, so then...
Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, just to your point there, do you honestly want me to say something until the evidence of doubt, because it sounds like we're, sorry. It sounds like we're all agreeing, so why don't we just sort of have a foreword evidence of doubt somewhere and say exactly what you want to say, because I think we're all on the same page, you know?
Yeah, we are, I just tend to, policy, government, through the draft.
But no, but there are...
Right, we could add, we could add some line here to that paragraph. All right, anybody have a discussion on other points?
I have one other question.
All right, Mr. Shepherd.
So we were to, these will become the standards, remind me again, because this is in here to, sort of class of 2023, when would they become the standards? What would we be doing for this year?
By policy, yes, by policy, this year you've got transition in there.
I'm sorry, where was that?
In the Course of Study Guide, we have the regulations that include that. Right, so that the regulations are actually in the front part of the Course of Study Guide, I don't know if you saw that.
Yeah, but that one's for next year, right?
I think it includes this year.
Because the one we got is 1819. We didn't get 1718. We got 1718 originally, right, but then that was when it was in policy, it's, I'm just, I mean, I can follow along if it's like, we're going to prove this thing, and then it's going to show up in the front, which is what I think I just heard, we're going to prove this thing, and then it's going to show up in the front of the Course of Studies.
Page six.
So district performance standards starting with class of 2018.
Yeah, it was on the kids who are graduating this year.
That is, isn't that class of 2018?
I'm sorry, where are you reading?
In the, it looks like it's page eight, Course of Study Guide, page eight, district performance standards starting with class, with class of 2018.
Yeah, but this is in the guide, it's approved, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow along here.
The Course of Study Guide is presented to us, I don't think it's, it's approved per se, at least not at this meeting.
Typically, it's presented approved, so.
Generally, the regulations will also be, I think, with the policies.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is, this is the regulation that will be with the policy, which...
I'm sorry.
So in board docs, Peter Bernstein... So in board docs, Peter Bernstein, we will have all policies, no matter what their source of origin, and we will have what we used to call procedures, what I'm now hearing more called regulations.
Yes.
And they will be online, available to anyone in the district through the board doc system?
Correct. We still need to talk to Kim, but I think the idea is to make the two, so that you can get from one to the other.
From one to the other?
Meaning that if you're in the policy, that you'll be able to also open up the regulation, which is like.
Yeah, it's just like, it's, it's actually what we have right now, but. I'm, I'm sorry, Jill, do you?
I was trying to see if I could find this year's Course of Study Guide, because it should outline what we're doing this year, right in page six of that document, which is approved, right?
Right, and that's a policy change that we approved last spring.
I think that's what we determined, was that whatever.
Yeah, but I thought we left everybody hanging.
No, we didn't.
We left everybody hanging because we didn't have, we had for 2017 only. But then we didn't have, we got this one, I get this, this is like, this is what happens 2018 forward, that's great. The, I'm sorry, 2000, class of 2019 forward.
Right.
So what the CADE policy says is you decide the spring before, so whatever was in place last spring is what impacts this year's kids.
Okay, well, we made a problem, because last year, if you look at it last year, we set one for 2017 only.
Right.
And then what existed was, before that, was what existed. And there were some changes that Rick and Chris were asking for to what existed before that we would implement this year.
Right, so the direction that we gave them, and what they went forward with, was communicate with parents October 10th, so everybody was communicated with if they weren't hitting the standard. So they had enough information from us in October, but that's what they went forward and did.
And if you look in the Course of Study Guide, that's online, it says credit score for graduation class of 2018. Below that, there's a graduation requirements for the class of 2021 and beyond will be updated after VOA approval.
So I think the direction we gave Chris and Rick is what they went with, and we gave that direction at the board meeting publicly. So the parents' UIV has been informed, so everybody's got their letter, letters have been sent, they've been returned, everybody met with their guidance counselors, you've got very few numbers of kids that are not at the standard, so we are. So yeah, for 18, a student must earn at least 22 credits, it has the distribution requirement, it has perform, meets performance standards in reading, writing, math, science, and then you got a letter if you were not on track in one of those performance areas.
Mr. Sher.
And the standards were the standards we set last spring, or that we set last spring. Actually, they got them here, so it's got the course distribution, it's got the standards being they'll read their literacy texts, they will demonstrate confidence by attaining the second level of achievement on CT School Day SAT, so the Connecticut School Day, three or higher on AP English Cap and Lit, three or higher on AP US History, 42 or higher on verbal PSAT, 420 or higher, depending on when the PSAT was taken, 420 or higher on verbal SAT I or goal, or A, goal, or above score on the Connecticut Alternative Assessment CT AA. For 2018 only, students who meet at least one of the following criteria are also deemed to have met the standards, who demonstrate proficiency at or above 801 on the STAR reading assessment. Student will use standard English to communicate effectively to an audience for a specific purpose, and then it goes on with additional scores in English history, 420 on the SAT, acquiring and demonstrating conceptual computational or mathematical skills necessary to formulate, analyze, and solve quantitative problems. It goes on with math scores, 420 or higher on the math SAT I, SAT II, 42 or higher on the math portion of PSAT, or 420 or higher. So it was basically everything that lasts typically. And then for 18 only, students who have met at least one are also deemed to have met the performance standards if they have a 20 or above on the ACT Math, which is the college benchmark nationally, and who have demonstrated proficiency at 747 on the STAR Math Assessment. So I got it, got it? So that is the, that's the 2018.
I, I.
And we're going to try to.
I do think in the future, it might be nice if we have the regulations available when we're doing a policy to have those as a separate board doc or with the board doc, so that we can look at those. In this case, it was in the Course of Study Guide, but I think it'd be nice to have those.
Other questions, comments? Done once, done twice. All right, thank you, and we'll see you again at the public meeting.
And then Rick and Chris will be here too.
All right, next item is the G004 with the agenda planning. I just want to add for the public meeting, and it's a, just a, to you, Dr. Gilde, a discussion of committees, we're going to do committee appointments, which may be in the record, and also discuss the standing in that committee's. Anybody else on the agenda plan? Mr. Sher.
Jill, there were a couple items in here, and I just didn't, I wasn't sure what they were, and I was hoping you could describe. One was the French Prevention Council survey.
You'll be hearing about that in January, we have a guest speaker coming to present on that.
Okay, and then there were, on, I guess on the 18th of January, there's going to be a start time, and we're going to do an update. But then I saw somewhere here, there was also another start time update. Can you just help me understand what the start time updates are?
Start time update will be after we have all of the data that we need to be able to do the update. So with the student survey being mid-January, we may get everything but that, so you may have to hear start time updates twice.
That's what I was trying to make sense of, it made more sense to just wait until it all. But it's currently.
We should have our November survey results back for that January 18th day, but the student survey will just start January 15th, so I don't think we're right around there.
Peter, are you suggesting she reads all she has, all the data?
That would be.
Well, I was just trying to understand when they were, because I know there's a lot of chat and discussion out there about it, but I was just trying to understand where they were, because I saw the committee one, and then I kind of saw an update, but.
I'm sure there's chat because the survey's out, right? So I'm sure we can participate in the survey.
Well, we'll take it at the chair meeting, and we can figure out the timing if you know this.
We don't have one scheduled for regular board meetings, right? It's only scheduled for committees right now? That's what I thought, and I can't seem to find it.
I believe January 18th of 18, we have a special meeting of the board, school start time, and hot committee.
Right.
But that's the one I'm seeing.
Well, we're going to discuss the ad hoc committees at our January, or December public meeting.
Yeah, January 4th. January 4th, you've got a 20-minute informational update only listed.
I'm sorry, what was it, it was the 24th, right?
No, January 4th, 4th.
January 4th, that's what I saw, it seemed like I'm looking too early.
So we won't add the student, but we'll have everything else.
I wonder if we just defer it until we've got all the data? I mean, unless there was something really important to come up in that meeting.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll take that up at the chair meeting, figure that out. Dr. Francis.
Just as a pondering point, I brought this up in PGC, but maybe just to plant the seed in other people's minds, I was suggesting that maybe we also look at our spring schedule and think about if we're able to start doing some professional development, or if we're thinking about lighthouse or other things and potentially using some of our meetings for those things, as we're looking at agenda planning. If we're feeling a little fuzzy about that, I think that might be a nice one to do.
I support the Lighthouse project, and I know it in depth through CADE, and I think it's such a valuable program, I'd love to see it in the district.
Do they come to us, Jennifer, or do we have to go to them?
They will come to us.
So can we set the timing, or do they give us the times?
They would set the timing with you, later.
That's great.
Yeah, I think, I think they said, I think they said, Jill, when they presented them in the retreat, that they look for, it's like a schedule. I think they need to be, I think, be settled. Yeah, like once, once, once every six weeks, and they need a block of time. So it'd be great, I agree with Jennifer, it would be a great thing to do, but if we need to be clear, it takes a, it's a lift, it's an effort.
Certainly something to explore. Anything else on agenda plan? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion of adjournment. I know, I know. There's two, there are two written reports, if you'd like to sit there and read for a little while, that's just fine. I'll take a motion of adjournment. All those in favor? Jennifer, she really does.